State Board of Education Special Meeting to Order. Good afternoon. I am the President of the Bridgeport Education Association. Given the gravity of today's discussion, I wanted to share my perspective with you. Begin with our public participation. Just as a reminder, please state your name and your address when you come to the table. And public comments are limited to three minutes, so please adhere to that. Thank you. Staff, this is Jeff Morsey, filed by Marie Correa.
I'm Jeff Morsey. My address is 119 Auburn Way, Arlington, Connecticut. Good afternoon. I'm the President of the Bridgeport Education Association. Given the gravity of today's discussion, I wanted to share my perspective with you. As you know, the educators of Bridgeport identify a number of significant concerns about their working conditions this fall. Our teachers continue to persevere and educate their students despite facing these challenges daily. We need them to remain in the classroom at all costs. After a year and a half, where the prior superintendent saw a lack of transparency, unilateral decision-making, and the exclusion of union in the community, our current interim superintendent is working with us and listening to teacher input. This does not mean that all of our concerns from this fall have been remedied, but we are feeling more confident that things will improve. For example, on Friday, we had a roundtable meeting with the acting superintendent, assistant superintendent, and a group of about fifteen teachers to discuss their perspective on the delivery of special education services in the district. We have similar roundtable meetings scheduled through the next month or so for teachers of ELL, early childhood, middle, and high school, as well as elementary. Our first meeting last week felt like a breath of fresh air within the district and gave us some optimism that the issues plaguing our schools are going to be addressed appropriately and with urgency. Additionally, members of the DEAs have been meeting with the interim superintendent regularly. They are confident that he is trying to reduce the negative impact of current budget issues on our students and on our instruction. You know this is going to be challenging. We want to be part of the solution. We want the teachers to have input. Of course, we intend to make sure that all legal processes are followed in relation to our collective bargaining agreement, but we are confident that collaboration and productive negotiations will occur. It's abundantly clear to us that what we need is stability and unwavering leadership. There's no quick fix to any pressing issue, but we must work collaboratively to eliminate the obstacles and barriers that stand in our way. Thank you.
Correa, here we are.
Good afternoon. Maria Pereira, 800 Wall Street Avenue, Bridgeport, Connecticut, 06610. Let me explain to you that I was the lead plaintiff in a Supreme Court decision which overturned the illegal takeover. And this, not you per se, although Alan Taylor was certainly very involved in it, the illegal takeover of the Bridgeport Board of Education that occurred over Fourth of July weekend, 2011, when we, this country celebrates its democracy. And what that did is create chaos in Bridgeport. The then Commissioner Pryor, who bought us Paul Vallas, which was a disaster, he gave us Dr. Sharp as a Commissioner Network provider for Dunbar School, who turned out to not even have a doctorate. He was a convicted felon who had been incarcerated in California dealing federal funds. He hired a sex offender at Dunbar School. And he had massive teacher turnover within ninety days of his first year at Dunbar School. When I think of the State Board of Ed, I don't think of one thing they've ever done to help Bridgeport. It just still created chaos. Now, I was at the meeting here in the committee meeting, because when I read the article that they had been summoned up here, I had an alarm bell ringing in my head, and I warned any of them. This is another attempt at a state takeover. Now, you, Madam Chair, stated at that meeting, "We have a regular meeting in six days. I'll be back before the full board." But it's not fair to you to come back in six days. Well, these people who are very new in their positions thought they would be back in March. You don't have a February regular meeting on your calendar. Do you know when they found out about this meeting? Your deputy commissioner sent him an email during a federal holiday, Martin Luther King, when our president was being at 8:30 PM. 8:30 PM on Monday of a federal holiday is when they found out this was happening. And the resolution wasn't even provided to them. I went online and found it and sent it to a number of board members. Do you think that's fair? Do you think that's transparent? Now, you can do this, but know that Bridgeport will not sit back and take it. It's pure of it. Last time, we took care of Paul Vallas. We did what Paul Vallas with Chicago New Orleans and Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, couldn't do. You've constantly been in the national news around Bridgeport, not for positive things, but for negative things. So understand, we are mobilizing, we are preparing, and we will not accept it.
Joseph Sokolov, Mr. Delac.
I'm going to have to get some.
Followed by Robert.
I want to give a little more background with some documents attached. My name is Joseph Sokolov. I'm the 334 First Quarter Ever, Bridgeport, Connecticut. I'm currently the Finance Chair and the Vice Chair of Bridgeport Education. This is a bit of a work for four of us. We had a plan. But the last budget was not presented until the last day of the electoral election, and initially without the majority, with more being agents of speech with our CFO. The chair pushed through a $309 million budget, while the atmosphere reached committee meetings where very few questions were asked, but the chair never allowed true discussions. The decision to bounce the budget by using almost the entirety of our internal service fund was carelessly made. This poorly taught our plan, the majority of the voice afforded, was never fully explained and harbored from around. It becomes over and includes wasteful spending, hiring people from the group that were clearly not fiscally sustaining. Downsides are now subject to the cut less than one year of the mission. This is law facilitated by the former chair, who ironically is raising a lot of the concerns here today to our leadership. The properly forwarded and obvious board members from pervading, debating, and amending the budget in order to limit the damage being created, are now complaining about the dysfunctional documents that they left. Now, we must labor under the threat of a state takeover. Initially, under the new leadership of Dr. Avery and the new chair, I was hopeful that we could finally turn things around. However, I have to bounce now. After some conversations and an email saying that all committee majorings were untold until after July 27, and that the board lacked any urgent business to conduct until that date, I believe this is in response to my requested agenda looking to review the multiple contracts we will be hiring on administrative that the board has yet to see or ever approve. We really must hold the board accountable for past actions and, more importantly, future actions. The state and the community must allow the elected board a chance to fund the superintendent while holding us accountable for decisions we made. I'm not so sure that it's possible with the current leadership that was handpicked by prior leadership. The chair now seems to be regressing to the leadership styles of the past by delaying progress and a transparent discussion on the issues facing them. At the end, the board must no longer surface fiscal responsibilities and seek to hide behind closed doors. We must do it through equity by minimizing and keeping cuts while in the classroom and academics and policy or in our decisions. We must advocate for more funding to meet the reduction need for overall cuts. We must not allow the state that has been complicit in underfunding our entities for decades to upend the democratically elected board. Every district has superintendent turnover, although we manage Connecticut, but more superintendents than Bridgeport. Every district suffers from struggles with special education, bridge, and poor. When will these other districts be called to offer, if ever? The Bridgeport community once again targeted for takeover and the installation of a new charter schools reunion to take its place? And I even often think that the state has narrowly made up its line. As a local effective elected official, I am totally against. I'm totally against state power, but if I does take steps to interfere, I would prefer to assist us with electing a new superintendent. The community and all the board has selected that candidate, and they're willing to apply, as everybody else is. Although Mayor isn't allowing reviews, the mayor has also given the law review for the last superintendent, David Star. He is death by saying. But I hope and pray at the end of this process, God willing, we can rebuild and hopefully expand our services to the children of Bridgeport in the 2026-2027 school year, and protect that from the efforts of failed leadership. We can rise together. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Rob Traver, Robert Traver. I live at 110 Hable Paris, Bridgeport, Connecticut, 06610. I'm Commissioner, members of the board. My name is Rob Traver. I speak today as a member of the Bridgeport Board of Education and a proud grandparent of a pre-K3 child of Bridgeport Public Schools and another due to start in a few years. In my earlier times, I, my daughter graduated from Central High School in 2006, and I taught fourth and fifth grade in Blackham School from 2001 to 2020, and was President of the Bridgeport Education Association. I joined the Board of Ed in March of 2023 to fill an opening created by the resignation of a member. Just over a year ago, I found myself along with three colleagues on the outside looking in. My colleagues, Joseph Kalavich, who just spoke, Albert Panaham, who had us, and Willie Medina, long-term educational activist in Bridgeport, had all spent years working to make Bridgeport Public Schools better for the children of our city. All of us had children who attended and graduated from Bridgeport Public Schools, or in Joe's case, his son is in high school now. We believed the previous leadership was taking a fiscally irresponsible path. Unfortunately, our efforts to engage in responsible discussion were stymied by the Board of Ed chair. We were prevented from asking questions and denied access to the chief financial officer. We urged fiscal prudence, but were ignored. We ended up passing a $309 million budget with barely two hours of discussion. The vote was five to four. We were assured by the previous leadership that we could afford this budget. We knew better. She used virtually all of our savings, the Internal Savings Fund, to balance it. Ultimately, for many reasons, the bad decisions made by the previous superintendent and Chair of the Board of Ed led to their removal from those positions. Ironically, in her last week of office, the chair wrote a letter to the state complaining about the, quote, "lack of effective central office leadership and ineffective board problems", which arose under her leadership and under their leadership. Among those were the illusory deficit in this year's budget, which was balanced using an irresponsible amount of our savings. In any case, I speak today to testify that we have just begun to correct the year of fiscal and managerial misbehavior to address the problems that she raised. We have a new chair elected at the first meeting in December. New committees formed over the holidays are just beginning to meet. We've begun making cuts in the 24-25 budget to trim costs in anticipation of the cuts we'll need to make in the 25-26 budget, which we have only begun to start working on. The new Board of Ed leadership is working closely with the interim, former acting superintendent, Vice Avery, to accomplish this challenging task. We appreciate your assistance, but would also appreciate the chance to be allowed the opportunity to complete the task we have begun. Thank you.
All right.
I have a copy of my statement, and I will present it to this woman to pass out to you all.
Yes, thank you.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Albert Panaham, who has 276 St. Hank, and I'm in Bridgeport, Connecticut. I will say 645, and I'm one of the board members of Bridgeport Public Schools. I will talk to you from the heart. I want to talk to you upon what my character from Bridgeport Public Schools showed in that morning. We work very hard to ensure our students have very good education. Nothing is easy, I know, but we can make a difference. You have to understand that now that we have a good board, we have a great superintendent, that he knew. But the good thing is upon him, he's not going to give up. If he was another person, he'd say, "I'm out of here." So he'd say, "I'm going to stay," but he wants to have the state for Bridgeport Public Schools. And one of the things is that I've been almost twenty years in the district because I started when my son was in first grade, kindergarten, or into high school when he graduated. I was a parent BTS all leader since almost twenty years being in the district. Know what's going on in our Bridgeport Public Schools. And he, this is my second turn as a board member, told me that we're not going to give up. Told me that we're going to try and do the best we can, because we are not perfect. Only God, you know why the reason why we're here. You know the reason why, the humility. Elect me as a board member because they trust me. You have to understand to give it a chance. I know the people before, they taught you a lot of, hey, what happened years back? When you tried guys to take over first one. But this is not going to happen. And you have to understand too, that not only Bridgeport have issues, they have another town that have issues. And I don't hear, and I don't see that sometimes you guys trying to take over or try to see figure out something to fix the problem. Just because Bridge was a big city, big town, a big community, that doesn't mean we can't handle it. You have to understand we got almost 21,000 students, almost 2,500 staff, and it's something that we're not going to give up. We're here because I talk to you from the heart, I talk to you about my parents' one, because I'm here, and I'm elected because the parents want me to be here. They trust me. If they may be trust Dr. Avery. And I told all those times, Dr. Avery, and he know that, that's together we can make the difference, and he not how old, if we not give up. Understand that we can do it. We don't fix it. Nothing is perfect, but I always say this. With good communication and good respect, we have a successful. Thank you very much. God bless you all.
And Trey Woodson, followed by Kate Diaz.
Mark Andrews. I'm here to spread my strong support for state takeover. If we were to build schools, we're so much of.
Can you state your name and your address for the phone, for this case?
I'm John Woodson, 1 Smith Street, Bridgeport, Connecticut. I'm here to spread my strong support for state takeover of Bridgeport Public Schools. So into Connecticut, General Statute, Section 10, Cast 228, given this district's long history of failure by quality education, those students, especially in special education, multilingual students. Time has come to stop, system of empty promises, and deliver education for Bridgeport students have a civil rights. Since that issue facing Bridgeport have affected generous children and spoiled them to large. The low quality education is even spoiling some children to hazardous health conditions that mold and is blessed. It's time for a decisive intervention to ensure child civil, each child's civil rights and quality education. Bridgeport Public Schools, the state largest school district, has struggled, has struggled, but under the influence, having budgetary issues and a failure to address the needs of its first students. Bridgeport Public Schools' failures are due to a myriad of issues, including fiscal mismanagement. Bridgeport has spent millions of academic programs and materials without being contracted for professional development, ask how to use the program. Furthermore, Bridgeport Public Schools have wasted millions of one-time federal relief, AARP, S R funds to purchase and never use the program. The district spent over $7 million on a science program that was never touched and discovered covered in anomalies. Academic achievement levels consistently lag behind state averages with many students not meeting the basic proficiency standards in math, reading, science. Bridgeport Public Schools is the lowest performing district in math and the third worst in English. Bridgeport's average SAT is in the 300. This failure is a complete disservice to the children. Where the district is trying to meet its financial burdens have eliminated critical roles without board approval. For example, Dr. Avery, the district's interim superintendent, unilaterally fired our chief academic officer without any advance notice or board approval. Our current board chair, Ms. Perez, sits aloof to the needs of the children while permitting such neglect. How is Bridgeport supposed to address the educational failures if it doesn't have a chief academic officer, instruction coaches, directors of math, science, social studies, or English? Bridgeport Board of Education has effectively destroyed the foundation and the manpower necessary to take the vision out of the. Dr. Avery and children with Perez have kept classrooms unbalanced, creating fiscal issues. We have general education classrooms with as little as five children. They have kept it.
Finish up.
They have kept an empty, hazardous building open, like Bridgeport Learning Center that was built in 1895. It never renovated, and had student population of about forty when a building has capacity of approximately 1,500 children when built, while shipping out special education students of color out of the district. And Dr. Avery's special education had increased from $100 million to $115 million. Multilingual learners represent 28% of the student population, but Bridgeport has failed to implement programs purchased for these students. Consequently, 88% of our multilingual learners are scoring below proficient on last link standardized testing. Bridgeport Board of Education and Dr. Avery have been unable to make meaningful progress towards closing the achievement gap between students of different racial and socioeconomic background.
Start finishing up.
Okay, okay. State takeover offers the opportunity for a first start free from political and bureaucratic challenges that have hindered local efforts. The intervention would allow for more effective management, allocation of resources, and economic building. It would also provide a chance to strengthen their evidence-based strategies for improvement in outcomes influenced the district's funding system. It's essential in December to prioritize the future of Bridgeport's children by taking decisive action now. State takeover requires needs better transportation oversight needed to ensure that all students in Bridgeport have access to high-quality education, regardless of their background or zip code. Considering this critical step in addressing the systemic failure within Bridgeport Public Schools, Bridgeport deserves a better education, and state takeover is the best opportunity to give.
Good afternoon. I'm Kate Diaz. I am the President of the Connecticut Education Association, affiliated with 21 Oak Street in Hartford, Connecticut. I am here today to really support the idea that we need an intervention in the Bridgeport Public Schools. I think you've heard from all the speakers that comment interest that there are 19,000 students who need our help and need assurances that the high-quality public education that we have promised them is the quality of the education that we will provide them. I will tell you that I am confident that the 1,600 certified staff members are ready to do the work that needs to be done. But I think that the interest that we bring forward is an interest in doing the work differently. If we keep doing the same things we've always done, we will get what we've always got, right? That's kind of an old adage, nothing kind of new to say there. But what I offer you is this, is we have an extraordinary number of staff who are deeply committed to the Bridgeport Public School system, who have been ignored in almost every turn when they've raised their voices and said, "We would like something different. We want better for our students. We want better training. We want better programs. We want better resources, supplies, opportunities." And at every turn, they have been ignored. So as we look to the future, as we think about all the possibilities for these 19,000 students, I ask that you invite those teachers to the table. You see a solution and the only path forward that is inclusive of those educators. I will promise you, nothing will change if you don't do that. We are the people in the classrooms with the children. We are on the phones with the families. We are the ones who will execute any plan that is developed. So why not put teachers in this space to help develop that plan? So as we think to the future, I implore you to discover and find ways to give voice to the people who have spent all their time, their commitment, in any cases, they lived and have committed themselves to the Bridgeport communities. There's an opportunity embedded in this chaos, and the opportunity is to build out the public school system that the members of the community want, that the families need, the children deserve, and that the teachers are dying to provide. But you will never get there without the invitation to the table for the people who have the creativity, the inspiration, and the desire to build the system that we all want for the Bridgeport Public Schools. There is tremendous need, but we can do this work. We need to anchor ourselves in hiring certified qualified individuals. I think in some of the spaces, we have experienced non-qualified, non-certified individuals got into positions of authority, and they have led us down paths that were not quite exemplary. So let's right those wrongs, put the good people in the places that, and build something really positive. We have a problem right now. We have a fiscal hole. It needs to be fixed, no question. But we can't do that by eliminating the needs that are being met by social workers, teachers, and school counselors. We can't fix the Bridgeport Public Schools on the backs of those kind of cuts. So we need to be thinking creatively and differently. People will solve this problem. Staff solves this problem, and being a place people want to work starts to solve this problem. So as you invite kind of solutions to the table, please keep those 19,000 children in the forefront of your minds. Keep those certified individuals who have committed their careers to those children in the forefront of your mind, and know that we're prepared to do the work that needs to be done and to support the efforts as they move forward. Teachers are going to be a part of this solution. They will be the opportunity we build from. So I would encourage you, as we move forward, to keep that in the forefront of your minds. We're ready to do the job, people. We're ready to do the work. Thank you.
Medina.
So our Willie Medina, Bridgeport Board member, December 2023, born into this position on that 64th Port Gate in Bridgeport, Connecticut, over about $512,652. At what we're speaking about, because this is a state problem, that individual, the Bridgeport problem. We need to focus on our needs of our community and our students. Like someone I kind of stated, went through a year, getting a little bit more permanent. We didn't have a voice. Our microphones were being silenced. We were asking for information to make change. I got into this position, it was brave, because I wanted to build bridges. And I want to apologize if I did not include you guys in that collaboration. And we're talking about collaboration, not takeover. I don't know why people got into positions and they want to do, have somebody else do the work. They're willing to do the work. We had a superintendent that was acting failure by design, caused much trauma. And I think for anybody to consider at this moment to cause more trauma to our community when these changes should be done locally, we don't mind the collaboration, but our local boards are the ones that have a direct input with our parents, with our educators, and our community. We need to foster a sense of ownership and collaboration. We want to work hand in hand with you guys. We don't have a problem with that. It is your responsibility to do that, to make sure. But when we're talking about our classrooms are being, our education system in Bridgeport being underfunded, and we have a problem, we do have a problem, and we always talk, we don't talk about that funding. Because I'm looking at classrooms myself, that we're talking about over 100 classrooms that are missing certified teachers. Seventy-seven or plus are being covered by temporary or permanent subs. That is an issue. When I look at your guys' mission statement and everything, when you talk about achievement, we talk about growth first. We need to make them grow, that way they can have the achievement necessary. Well, we need teachers, and the only way we can get those teachers is by paying them. And where did we do have great staff in Bridgeport? I have three daughters that were educated in Bridgeport Public Schools. So my wife and myself are Bridgeport Board of Ed. I'm a minister and Vice President of Calvert Baptist Church. And I tell you, we're big not the little ones. I heard one parent say, "Because of the issue of the Board of Education, our children should not be collateral damage." And I want you guys to consider that, because trying to take over something that is for the people and by the people is going to cause trauma, it's going to cause issues. We have a superintendent that's willing to work hand in hand right now with the board and the community, and he is. And he is still trying to test it. We're probably still going to do a superintendent search and he's going to probably be in that mix. But I believe he's the right person for the job at this moment and he will be tested every single way because that is our employee. And know that we're trying to do the best right now we can with, with the group, but when you have people that want to be in the seat, just to be in a seat because of the corruption that they're going on in our city, then I will tell you, I'll implore you to consider out about the collaboration, working hand in hand. Give us the answers, give us suggestions, we don't mind, and let us implement it. We're here to work with you, not against you, but we will be totally against you guys trying to take over what belongs to our people in Bridgeport. Bridgeport is better and we will do better. Thank you.
That brings our public participation to a close. entertain a motion on three A, the Bridgeport Public Schools' action to address the district needs.
Okay.
On favor. I Hughes. Uh, Dr. Hughes is coming to the table for the board's information, um, just for those outside of accountability and support. I just want to go over a slight timeline of really how we arrived here. Now, some of you on accountability and support are aware of this. This actually goes back to an accountability meeting back in April, um, where, uh, the previous superintendent and the previous board came to sort of the accountability work committee, um, for approval of their turnaround plan, what it was. We moved that out of that committee onto the, to the full board in May, in which this entire board voted for in favor of that. During that first accountability meeting, we asked questions of that superintendent and board, in particular, their turnaround plan. Um, what we normally see in our plans, um, talent, academics, and climate and, on climate and culture and operations. And members of that committee asked questions in particular about that. Is the board in support of this? Do you have the teacher's support of this? And everything was favorable. Received at that time and we went, we turned it over to the board in May. The opening of the school year, many of us were contacted about what was going on in Bridgeport. There was a huge concern about what was going on, it was clear. There was controversy, not just with the board, but with the teachers. Um, after the election, we saw the budget alarm this return to the accountability meeting that took place last week. So that is how we arrived here, just so that all the board members who are not a part of accountability and support knows that that's why we're here to have this discussion now. Dr. Hughes will give his presentation and then we'll open it up on
Thank you, Vice Chair. Good afternoon, board members, Commissioner. And, uh, thank you, Vice Chair, for filling us in slightly on the, uh, the history of what we're doing today. As the Vice Chair had identified, January ninth of this year, the Accountability Committee heard from, uh, the C S D E on the fiscal challenges, the status of service delivery for students with special needs, and the transition in leadership in Bridgeport Public Schools. The committee subsequently voted to move this discussion to the full board. And included in your packet is the detailed report concerning the, um, concerns relative to this district that will be highlighted today. Before beginning, however, it is important to identify why we are having this discussion. And as many of the, uh, members of the public who spoke, it is certainly, uh, the nineteen thousand five hundred and ninety-one Bridgeport students we are here serve. All of these students deserve our undivided attention. So I'll pause for a moment so you all can look at the breakdown of the students who comprise the fullment Bridgeport. The first challenge that is affecting the students and the district fiscal. Last spring, the Bridgeport Board of Ed adopted a five-board vote. A twenty-five or twenty-four, twenty-five school year expenditure budget of three hundred and nine million dollars. The adopted budget included a deficit of approximately twenty-six million. Since that time, the deficit had grown to thirty-two million, as was reported by Dr. Avery during the January ninth committee meeting. As you can see on this slide, next slide. The total state and federal funding available to Bridgeport in twenty-four, twenty-five is three hundred and four million dollars, six hundred and seventy thousand, four hundred and six thousand. This number includes the annual educational cost share funding of a hundred and sixty-four million, as well as the estimate, estimated eight point three million excess cost reimbursement. Some are also includes other state and federal grants that I will discuss in a moment. But before I do, slide, it's important to note the COVID relief funding that was received by the district. The total amount, which is, uh, above a hundred and sixty-two million. These COVID relief funds were available to the district beginning in twenty twenty. As of the start of the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, there remained, uh, approximately seventeen and a half million for use by the district. Aside from COVID relief funding, Bridgeport Public Schools annually receives state and federal formula grants. These grants expire on June thirty of each year and most of the federal grants allow extended obligation liquidation periods. Next slide. Bridgeport received over one hundred and seven million in state and federal formula grants. Greatest state formula grant allocation is the Alliance District Grant at thirty-seven million. And the greatest federal formula grant allocation is Title One, Part A, totaling fourteen billion. You'll notice the multiple title grants and I D A grants because these are federal funds that are awarded each year, but can be utilized over the course of but in a couple of hours. The district also receives recurring state and federal grants that are allocated each year for a number of years that have various purposes. Next slide. Each Commissioner Network Grant, as you can see on this slide, provides funding to one respective Commissioner Network School in support of improvement. And funding is allocated each year for that same purpose. The final set of funding available to Bridgeport is the one-time state, federal, and federal fund that also have various purposes that provide the district with more than one year to use the fund. But you can see represented on this table, the one-time state and federal funds, the vast majority of which include detailed relief funding that was available to Bridgeport at the start of the fiscal year. While it, while what's not listed on this table, what was recently awarded to the Bridgeport Public Schools is the seven hundred and fifty thousand Twenty-First Century Community Learning Center Grant Funds that will be, uh, utilized in support of after-school programming to the Bridgeport Public Schools. Simply put, Bridgeport Public Schools receives a significant amount of state and federal funding. The funding, Bridgeport Board of Education approved an operational budget in spring of twenty twenty-four that includes the twenty-six million dollar deficit. In order to mitigate this deficit, the district is planning to use fourteen million of its reserve funds. From there, current interim superintendent, Dr. Roy Avery, has recommended a three-phase plan to further reduce the deficit. Phase one is the reduction of staff. Phase two is the cutting of programming and the revisiting of contracts. And phase three is the closing of buildings. This, of course, is pending the result the districts could, uh, facilities say. Phase one of the plan has begun, starting with the reduction of assistant principals and a director of special education. During the committee meeting on January ninth, Dr. Avery clarified that the eighteen assistant principals that will be reduced were hired in August and not included in the original budget, which added to the budget deficit. This slide represents the five-year history of district staffing levels, starting in two thousand nineteen, twenty. Greatest percentage increase has occurred at the central office administrative level. So cuts to unbudgeted school administrators and central office position if appropriate. But staffing issues connect with the second concern listed in your report, that of special education. Significant number of staff vacancies exist in the area of special education. August, the district reported that there were sixteen special education vacancies for positions that were budgeted that the district was actively trying to fill. During November, the Alliance District meeting with the district, the district reported that there were thirty-one special education teachers and thirty-eight professional vacancies that needed to be filled. During the committee meeting, Dr. Avery identified that the vacancies exist because staff have left the district for more competitive salaries offered by surrounding districts. He also mentioned the state and national teacher shortage. To address this shortage, the C S D E has developed the C T C's system. And I would like to invite my colleague, the Director of Special Education, Brian Punt, who has to share more on this system, as well as to, uh, discuss the second major area of concern relative to special education.
Hey, Dr. Hughes. Doctor, everyone. Uh, since its launch in twenty twenty-two, the Connecticut Special Education Employment System, uh, has connected over eighteen hundred job seekers in Connecticut to employment or special education role specifically. It's supported over a hundred and seventy-eight districts and programmed with customized job postings. And the site has garnered one point four million viewers over that time. Um, so, uh, the State Department has admitted, uh, significant, um, resources to provide these, this service to districts at no cost. Bridgeport is actively posting positions within the C T C's program. Um, with several positions posted to date. However, they have not yet taken advantage of the system's data dashboard, uh, which helps us understand um, decisions that are filled, uh, from the vacant postings. Additionally, there's an opportunity for Bridgeport Public Schools to take advantage of personalized and individualized marketing for the current vacancy that they use. Special education vacancies are raising concerns in Bridgeport because of the challenges providing special education services to the students. Since twenty twenty-one, there have been forty-seven special education complaints, due process hearings, and deviations. The number of those, uh, complaints have increased year over year from twenty twenty-two at nine, uh, that more than doubled in twenty twenty-three. Two point three, the total complaints. And thus far, this year, uh, they're on pace to exceed those levels. There are a number of concerns that, uh, complaints that we are in the midst of processing. In twenty twenty-one, there was also a systemic complaint filed that ultimately resulted in two hundred and sixty-four Bridgeport students needing to afford over ten thousand hours of special education services, what's called compensatory services. And in twenty twenty-two, the district was issued a systemic I D A regulation for having more than ten percent of their student I E Ps in non-compliance. On an annual basis, the C S D E is issued special education determinations to all local education agencies across the state. These determinations are documented in our district's annual performance reports, which are posted publicly on the website. And the work therein is to improve student outcomes, uh, for students with disabilities. Districts receive determinations based on accommodations, uh, compliance, as well as results based on special education indicators. And districts are assigned the following categories. Needs requirements, needs assistance, needs intervention, and needs annual development. Twenty twenty-two, Bridgeport Public Schools was assigned the determination of needs assistance one of we're falling short on state targets in chronic absenteeism, timely and accurate data reporting, as well as initial evaluation time. In twenty twenty-three, Bridgeport was assigned the determination of needs assistance two for not meeting targets on two indicators, both of which, um, were similar to the previous year, same as the previous year, including chronic absenteeism and initial evaluation timelines. The twenty twenty-four determination is pending.
Final concern identified in your report specific to the leadership of the district. Bridgeport Public Schools currently has Dr. Avery in the position of interim superintendent. However, the board has employed five superintendents in a short timeframe of seven years. Being at the board is responsible for only this one employee. It's concerning when a district has struggled to maintain consistent leadership at the executive level. A factor that is critical to improve the opportunities in our, for Bridgeport's nineteen thousand five hundred and ninety-one students. There's additional evidence suggesting the board has recently had difficulty operating efficiently and effectively. For example, it was in May of last year that the board approved the method by which to evaluate a former superintendent. There was complete, only, this, this process was completed only two months prior to the superintendent's evaluation deadline. More accepted approach would be to agree upon an evaluation method early in the year to support the superintendent meet the expectations set forth by the board. Similarly, the process by which the twenty-four, twenty-five budget was adopted was by a slim majority, uh, four. Many of those who did not approve the budget expressed concern about the budget process. As you had heard earlier, indicating this was not appropriately vetted or gone over. On January ninth, Board Chair Perez identified the board lacks district goals that will assist in driving financial decision-making and superintendent actions. Expressed the need for the opportunity to develop such goals. She also expressed the concern that district policies are out of date, which are noted on this slide. See, uh, staff certified hiring procedures, uh, as for the Bridgeport Public Schools website. Uh, that's approved in July fourteen, uh, student attendance policies dating back to two thousand and twelve, and so on, so forth. To support this future work, it's recommended that the Bridgeport Board of Education undergo training. Whereas some training is, has occurred, the board will benefit from learning together on the topics of fiscal oversight and policy development. And now, I now would like to take the opportunity to, um, to give our legal director, uh, turning Ian to share with the board.
Thank you, Dr. Hughes. I, I think before, uh, getting into some of the specifics in the proposed resolution, it's important to frame for the board exactly, uh, what is being requested here. Uh, there seems to be a reception from some of the individuals who spoke in public comment that this is a punitive measure that we are recommending the takeover of the Bridgeport Board of Education. Thinking of the relationship between state and Bridgeport, when I'm talking about the letter V, that is versus, we're talking about W as the word W. We are trying to, uh, approach this, this issue in a collaborative approach. And one of the board members who spoke in public comment, you all use that word, collaboration. That's what is being proposed here. Section ten dash two twenty-three, E subsection E subsection two, in the Connecticut General Statutes, provides a broad variety of interventions that the state board is not authorized to commission or, what would you say? There is, it's similar, there is another provision, subsection F of the same statute, which provides that the certain circumstances and the satisfaction of certain, certain conditions, uh, this board and the department has authority to reconstitute the local board of education and to, if reassigned to the state board of education, the, uh, control of the school district. We're not proceeding here today, we are not submitting a resolution, writing it on subsection F, which adds this far more theory measure, but rather subsection E. Again, this intervention, the interventions are intended to help local community districts, while achieving districts that in Bridgeport, which is noted in the PowerPoint in the Alliance District. And essentially, this is breaking down the resolution and there are a number of interventions. But right now, uh, the, uh, department is focusing in particular, while not waging our right to do other interventions, but we're focusing in particular upon three. One is assigning a technical assistance team to work in with the Bridgeport Public Schools, to guide district initiatives, and report progress on those initiatives to the commissioner. This team would be comprised of individuals who are experienced in, uh, and have expertise in public education. They would, uh, assess the Bridgeport Public School operations. They would work as district leaders and they would set educational benchmarks. They would come up with recommendations as to how the physical operations, the, uh, pedagogical operation, particularly with respect to special education students, uh, could, could best be served. And those recommendations would be shared with the commissioner of education. The second, uh, intervention that we are, we are requesting with respect to this resolution is requiring the Bridgeport Board of Education to undergo training, uh, to, uh, improve its operational efficiency and effectiveness. Uh, this is not an inclusive list necessarily, but, uh, what, what's contemplated is that entity or individual would be promptly retained by the Bridgeport Board of Education. You come in, uh, it's subject to the approval You come in, it's subject to the approval of the commissioner. We'll ensure that this is an individual or entity that would be experienced enough and skilled enough to conduct effective training. This training would include working with the board on the board superintendent relationship. You know, under ten dash two twenty of Connecticut General Statutes, the board has certain mandatory obligations with respect to the school district. Under ten one fifty-seven, subsection A of the Connecticut General Statutes, the superintendent of school is designated as the chief executive officer of the board and tasked with the day-to-day supervision of the district. As Dr. Hughes stated, the superintendent is to employ the board evaluations, the seconds. In order for any school district to work appropriately, they have to work on the same page. They have to be able to interact, they have to be able to recognize the respective roles and responsibilities of the board and of superintendent. There would be a, a training on the updating of board of education policies. Who worked across the state all have policies, and they're predicated upon federal and state law. And it's important that they are regularly updated as the laws are constantly explored, constantly changing. So it's important that these policies are updated, which is, which is really a helpful process as well, because it enables the board to have a better understanding and recognition of what the law requires of them. And other school district. The training would also be focusing on the setting of educational benchmarks and strategies for the Bridgeport Public School, with this with students. It's important to have specific goals and objectives in order to help direct the superintendent and the administrators and teachers whom the superintendent in turn supervises to work with and ensure to improve them. The implementation of protocols, ensuring that the district's programmatic obligation that the special education law, both federal and state, are being compliant with. If you've heard, this area is particularly concerning. There have been a number of complaints, a number of concerns as to whether it's student disabilities are being properly served. There would also be training on the annual budget process. He's known, his cooperation of any school district. And part and parcel of that is, is, is an understanding of the grant application process. The grant application, the grant dissemination within the district. And on a day-to-day basis, clearly, the superintendent would have more oversight of that in conjunction with the district's business manager. But nonetheless, this is obviously one of the most fundamental reported aspects of the board's role on storytelling. So it's very important that boards understand how the process works. In the adoption of guidelines and rules and order to corner proper and effective functioning of board of education meeting. The board is a legal entity, separated apart from its individual members. Members come together, and they form that legal entities, that the board of education. And for that legal entity to be effective, the individual members of the board must work together. That, not to say, but if different board members might not have different opinion, happens all the time. But nonetheless, there needs to be a certain level of decor. There needs, there needs to be a certain level of exchange of ideas so that the process of overseeing the board, school district, excuse me, can be informed by bright discussion, bright discussion does not mean acrimonious discussion. It means original decorum and conducting meetings in orderly fashion. This in turn provides guides to district superintendent, administrators, teachers, parents, the community in general. The thinking is that with this training, we, we can be with them all. It would be our hope that the board would, by February third, even retain this entity or individual, and subject to the approval of the commissioner, and that this training would then thereafter occur within a month. Part and parcel of this training would be, whatever, conducting the training would be consultation with the commissioner and make recommendations to the commissioner based upon what they're seeing, part of this training process. It would have to be transparent. It would be anticipated that in every regularly scheduled board meeting, the board would report in public, in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act, its stats, how it's going, how the training going, what are the steps it's taking. And really, what interventions are they implementing as a result of this technical team assistance. So this is a process in which state wishes to act transparently by way of the State Department of Education, but also we would expect and demand that the Bridgeport Board of Education also act in public and for the benefit, again, of the district, of the students, of the community. All the, the third component, again, there are many other interventions provided for under the statute, but we're both seeing here in particular with, is with three particular interventions, is the, writing the commissioner to appoint a district improvement officer for term of one year with the understanding that that term could be extended by the state board of education. Also, under ten dash two twenty-three E subsection E two, the commissioner has the right to approve the appointment of a superintendent of school, the Bridgeport Public School. And just to make sure that we all understand and we're on the same page, the technical assistance team and the training, we expect that to move always with, move in alacrity, move immediately. Commissioner, however, is reserved her right for immediate intervention with respect to a district improvement officer or the appointment of a superintendent. It, it makes sense, it's proof, see how things are progressing. That's why the commissioner wishes to have the team do its work, have the trainers do its work, and then make a determination as to whether it's, uh, appoint a district improvement officer. With respect to the improvement of superintendent, I don't want to get too deeply into the weeds here, even though that's an occupational hazard for attorneys. Ten one fifty-seven, subsection A currently provides the commissioner with the authority to approve a superintendent of school, a path or a district. I've come to, to the commissioner and said, we are going to appoint this individual to superintendent. The purpose of that is to, to make sure that, that the proposed superintendent is appropriately credentialed, and that's something that happens with everything in Connecticut. This, however, is not under ten one fifty-seven subsection A, this is under ten dash two twenty-three E subsection E two. What that means is, right now, Bridgeport had an interim superintendent. Commissioner is not looking to disrupt that. What the commissioner is, is seeking as part of this resolution is the statutory authorization. Should Bridgeport, back to search, should Bridgeport seek to, to appoint a permanent superintendent prior to the offering of any such, uh, statute talk about the election of a superintendent, an election appointment, whatever language you want to use, prior to the offering of a superintendent superintendentcy for individuals, the superintendent would have the right under statute to approve that decision to make this offer of the superintendent. So again, this is something, presumably, Bridgeport at some point is going to look to install a at some point down the road, whether that's next week, next month, whenever. At that point, the superintendent would reserve the right to exercise her right under Q twenty-three E.
Please give me the, can you please say that?
Can you say that? I take my terms, correct? Would, would reserve the right to exercise the authority under that statute to approve the board's proposed candidate. So the board, the board could offer the correct appointment, could offer the position if we have to, with the commissioner's approval. But I believe that that pretty much covers what we are, we are anticipating this resolution back to what.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Thank you. Dr. Salzner.
Thanks for the, uh, Mary?
Yeah.
If you could clarify, in point three, I'm not still, I'm not clear on point three on the the role of, of the commissioner. They require the appointment of superintendent, approved by the commission. Please explain that, that the board finds a permanent commissioner.
That's a good point. The commissioner reserves the right to, to comment, approve.
I, I, I understand that part, but the, the second says or. Or the appointment of a district improvement officer selected by the commissioner, so.
Tell me about the or, that, that's what I'm not sure.
Well, you know, that, that's a great point. It's interesting, the statute, it will probably talks about or, but it lists fifteenth intervention statute. And fifteenth is any combination of the above. So we take the position that should the commissioner decide that there needs to be a district improvement officer, she could still appoint one. At the same time, is the, the anticipated decision by Bridgeport to do third or, or whatever processing employee, to appoint a permanent superintendent, the commissioner would have the authority in the statute to approve that proposed candidate. Prior to making the offer and installing a superintendent, a superintendent candidate.
Well, is, is and or, it's like and or.
Yes.
Or and or, it's really and or.
And or, yeah, and or, yeah.
Yeah, that's where the clarification is.
So there could be both a superintendent and a district improvement officer upon the connection?
Theoretically, yes. And you know, I, I, I think it really comes down to the fact that different districts are at different stages. Let's say, for example, Bridgeport had a permanent superintendent in place. By that, there may, the department may, the commissioner may completely believe that a district improvement officer, that will be working collaboratively with a district superintendent, would be necessary. Here's situation of, and that, that could still be the case here. I mean, that, that's not in any way to denigrate the importance of the interim superintendent position, because obviously they're exercising the powers of a permanent superintendent on an interim basis. So the technical assistance team, the working, the training, and despite these efforts, the feedback to the commissioner and the section, it might be back, is that more needs to be done as a commissioner could appoint a district improvement officer. And that might be a parallel course to the Bridgeport board moving to appoint a permanent superintendent.
That's why it's and or.
Yeah, exactly.
And they just clarified.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and then in one, point of clarification, the item three, not, they, they not given a opinion on the interim superintendent.
Right.
The interim superintendent remains under this.
Right, exactly, and we want to clarify, it's not like we're coming to the, the board, that we want the interim superintendent added to me. Again, he was, it's subject to previous approval, so we're looking to watch the, the, the setting. We're just talking about the fact that again, at some point, Bridgeport is going to in statutory language, elect, which is saying to appoint a permanent superintendent. And that, what the commissioner is pretty, fire approval, uh, evolving.
Any other questions from the board? Top one, and I'm, understanding I'm correct, when it, the planning of the technical assistance, that would include training on, in Brian's area, that would, that they also have some assistance in the special ed?
Right, right, the technical assistance team would work in the areas of leadership, financial operations, special education, and it looks general instructional initiatives, of, of entities, and, yes.
Dr. Salzner.
But one, one additional question, if, the, this all sounds absolutely necessary. Still a budget deficit, so I don't, I just, back end address.
Really, it's, it's a great question, and it is a process. My understanding is that there's an audit that's taking place locally. A part of what we'll be looking at is that area as well, to find out what is happening. And, and as you heard, that there's already a plan that, that, that is in place for the, the, Dr. Roy, Dr. Avery is already working on addressing that issue, of course. So we'll be taking a close look at that to see where we are. One of the things you've heard is, so we look at staffing, for the staff that's being dislodged. We've got to take a look at all of that together to see how it's impacting the district students and the educators in the district. So there is, do I have the ability to write a check? That, I do not have that ability, but I should also say, paying very close attention. I mean, you talked about collaboration this morning, I met with the Bridgeport delegation. So that they are very much aware and understand what is happening here, that we're not doing this without knowledge of the Office of the Covenant. So we're all having this conversation on some of the issues you've heard in, not just Bridgeport, around excess cost of special, special education, all of those are a part of it. This particular issue, we're looking specifically at Bridgeport and what is happening there. And get a good sense of, a good understanding, so we can figure out what interventions or support needs to look for.
The follow-up about the funding piece of things and the trainings or technical assistance that's being offered. It was a concern to me to see in the report, the frequency of, a column that said frequency of contact required on grant edits. And specifically that the Alliance District Grant has still not been approved. I want to make sure that the trainings, I thought I heard someone say something about grant application. I want to make sure that that is in fact part of the training, because it, it would seem from the information that's provided, that there's a lot of back and forth and misalignment of the application for the proposed grant.
Right, that, that would be part of the, uh, that would be part of the screening. Right, and, and I believe super tech would be part and part of that. And also, you know, the technical assistance team also be in it of, of operation, which would necessarily include grading.
And then, just, again, I'm also going to follow up on statutory language. And I correct that in number three, the reference to the term of up to one year, that that is in reference to appointing of a district improvement officer as opposed to the superintendent?
Correct, right, yeah.
So that, so this does not preclude, for example, the board of education, after they go through their search process and, and everything, and they've made a decision, let's assume the commissioner agrees with that, they can offer a three-year contract.
Right, that, right.
Can you just go back to the issue, Dr. Hughes, you may want to chime in about those grants. You've heard us talk about the grants and managing those grants, really, really important, and understanding how to leverage and maximize that funding. We recognize there's concern about funding, but there's also maximizing what's already there. And that is really important, that we're paying attention to that as well, yes.
Thank you, Commissioner, and, and that is a very good question. That's where you'll see the, the concerns will blend and braid together, right? So when there's good direction, good solid decision-making, district goals, focus on outcomes, right? The grants can then support that work, alignment of those grant fundings can support that work. So that's kind of part one of that technical assistance. In this, in this case, there's a lot of back and forth, because there needs to be a shifting of grants. I, I just listed it in the lines, and technical assistance is provided during that opportunity, but it really should be in advance, the planning of those grants and how they fit with the greater district budget and, and fiscal priorities.
And, and just, and the staff at the agency, who may not be technically part of this team that we're putting together, they're not going away. They're continuing to do the work and continuing to support and continue to be there for the district. All the issues with grants, we, we go back to. All the issues with grants, we, we go back to the, see the Bridgeport specifically, you know, where are they in terms of being approved? We want to make sure that those grants are approved so that they can be utilized as quickly as possible. And we talk about, again, we, when we talk about effective leadership, sometimes it's about asking the right questions. We want to make sure that the board knows the right questions to ask, uh, around these particular issues. While I know superintendent is going to be doing a great job and the staff is there, it's also about accountability.
Mike, you made reference to February third.
Yes.
Is the day that where the Bridgeport Board would. Respond, is that what you're saying?
It was. It's an ambitious, uh, timeline, but it was, uh, and again. The urgency of situation, the test dates, that the, uh, would hope that by February third, the board would have each age, or identified. A appropriate entity or individual by training. Extended training would actually begin no less, no later than a month thereafter.
Is why we got this meeting so good. Any other questions? So you had a resolution in front of you, explained in great detail. All in favor?
I.
I. If, if the.
And or. Yeah. Yeah.
Opposed.
One left. And I'm in favor when that's me.
Opposed. Motion carries. Commissioner. Nineteen thousand students and sixteen hundred educators, reading.
Uh, no pressure. Uh, no, but thank you very much. Uh, I really want to make sure that, first of all, I thank the board. Uh, for the special meeting that you came together because of the importance of this team, uh, so that you can take action. Uh, this decision is one I know you don't want to take lightly, and I want folks to recognize that. Uh, and I know it is re, really rooted in your unwavering commitment to realize the vision. Uh, of preparing all students for life learning and moving on school. The resolution, I believe, is an opportunity to support Bridgeport Public Schools in a way that's sustainable. And least a positive transformative change. You've heard the numbers, that is our why, we talk about it all the time. Nineteen thousand five hundred ninety one students, and your decision today will impact every one of them. Uh, you look at the breakdown of the numbers of them, who are eligible for free meals, for students with disabilities. Those that represent English learners, multilingual learners. And what's on that slide that I hope you didn't miss is that close to three hundred students in Bridgeport experienced homelessness. Uh, and housing instability this last full year. That means that these students lack to fix regular and adequate nine time residence. Maybe doubling up, living in hotel motel, living in shelters or unsheltered, uh, living in public spaces. And so it is so important that when we think about that, then the gravity of the situation of all of us working collaboratively. Uh, really, really is important. From our report, you saw the performance rate of, of students. Uh, be it reading, we're nineteen point nine percent of the students, um, are reading on grade level, or twelve point three percent of the students. Uh, are proficient in math. Uh, we, we see the numbers of students who are on track to graduate high school declining. Uh, those, that to me is the urgency of this moment. And this is not a call out on the district. This is about the need for all of us to be working together and support the educators that's supporting and making a difference for students. So that's really why we're here and, and why I so appreciate, uh, everyone talking about the urgency of the moment and for us, for me personally. And for, uh, the Department of Education, we're all in, in providing this level of support. And you can hold us accountable, as you should, uh, to make sure that we are in the, even what we set out to do. The families, the educators, and your students deserve no less. So, we're accountable for this. Uh, we'll make sure we take it seriously for the board, we'll keep you updated, as we've been doing, so you can count on board meetings. Uh, we were able to give you an update of what is occurring. Uh, later today with your action, we will certainly provide a letter specifically, uh, to, uh, the chair of the board, uh, copy to the acting superintendent. Specifying the kinds of things Mike was talking about, so it's very clear, with the timeline set. And a part of our team in doing this work is the State Education Resource Center. Dr. Kennedy, uh, is in the room, because as was said, and what I will reiterate, uh, is that it's not about. This is not about Bridgeport without Bridgeport in the mix. And so beginning tomorrow, Dr. Kennedy will be reaching out to the district and district leaders to schedule listening sessions. We want to hear from the community directly. We want to hear from the educators and the staff in the district, and we want to hear from students that will continue to guide, uh, the work that we're doing here. So it is truly about working collaboratively, but of course, there's also accountability. As we're holding ourselves accountable, we're making sure that we're holding everyone, uh, accountable in this space. Uh, because that's what's deserved as our north star, uh, are the student, the educators and families, uh, in Bridgeport Public Schools. So that is what, that's the charge you've given me. Thank you for that charge, and, uh, we will make sure that we're effectuating that charge to the best of our ability, collaboratively with the district. When you think about all of this, the board of education locally is a big, is a big partner. And need to do is due diligence so that they can be a target. Uh, there's a quote that I really like, uh, this, uh, from, uh, someone that does a lot of this training is that. Student, uh, outcomes will not change until adult behaviors change. And so we're holding all of us accountable for the adults to do the right thing on behalf of those students. I'll just end with, I like to think of all of us in this room, we have glass all around us, picture the students. Looking at all of us, listening to what it is that we're doing. That is so important, that we're then doing this on their behalf, putting away all those things that are just noise. Uh, and doing what's right for all of them. That is my commitment to all of you, that we will, as a Department of Education, support Bridgeboard in doing this work and have transformative change. When there's a new leader in place, we're not walking away. We'll be making sure that we're there to onboard and provide the stability that's necessary, uh, for this district to be the best that it can be. Uh, in leveraging education for our students. So, thank you very much to the board, uh, for what you, you've done here today, uh, and we're going to move forward as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Turn to a turn.
And everybody voted yes.